Here. But let's get this started. Welcome everyone. Thank you for coming. Uh, we're gonna excuse Commissioner Thomas for the first part and informed he'll be here late. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start with that in here. Uh, so that moves us to agenda item number two, which is consent or approval of planning commission meeting minutes from November thirteenth. And the work session meeting minutes from January eighth. We will get an opportunity to review this. Any issues?
I don't think so.
No.
I will make a motion that we approve the minutes of both November thirteenth twenty twenty four and January eighth twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Right? It's approved.
Given that our other members in the committee, we have to put that down.
Actually, we move the election or the.
Um, yeah, do we need to motion since we're reordering the agenda?
Yeah, we can just move that. We'll move that to the end. Uh, before public comments, so that they will public if they want to. Election, but we'll. We'll reorder in the item number three and four. That way we can have everybody present for the election. And we move straight into our number agenda item number four, which is discussion on the critical homeownership development ordinance. Brandon, you lead us in this discussion and introduce what's changed from the last map.
Um, we happen to. So just as a kind of a little bit of a refresher um. On the process of working together uh to develop a. Ordinance that will allow for uh some critical or essential or. Um.
Needed.
Needed or trying to think of the other. Obtainable, there we go. Obtainable uh housing um it's a zone that we don't currently have here in. Harrisville um and we've been working together to 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 come up with a zone. So with that being said, um that ordinance was sent out to all of you for a review and your comments. Uh, we've taken what we've received and have applied that to the latest. Uh, ordinance which you have in front of you here um. And uh, just wanna continue that discussion um. On. On the ordinance. So I guess what I'd like to do is just maybe open it up for some some comment and some dialogue as we. And when we go forward. Um, so then, I don't know. Questions?
I need to review all the comments to make sure I start in the right place. Um.
Page one's a good place to start.
Page one is a good place to start. So when I looked through it, I added the names of the cities and you didn't like that.
It wasn't I didn't like it. I just thought, you know, it isn't necessary. And again, if you guys think it's necessary, then we.
I thought it made it a little more clear as to which cities, so we're not. You know, putting together a boundary here. Maybe we could word it as ones that touch the Harrisville city boundary.
If, I guess my question is if if somebody from. I don't know.
Plain City.
Plain City.
Marion Sliderville.
Marion Sliderville, if they were to come in, would we, I mean, you wouldn't turn away.
Okay, wouldn't be eligible for it. I think that's where I wanna draw the line.
But yeah, understand, but if. Um. I mean, I. I think, I think, I I think if they choose to. Um. I don't know. I don't know where I'm.
I struggled with this whole idea and what's what's best and do we do adjacent? Do we do adjoining? How far do we go? Like, I understand having some um boundaries. But I also think about the vast gray areas that we have. For instance, you know, we might have a specialized healthcare worker that works at three different hospitals and only one of them is. Adjacent or adjoining to our boundaries, you know, would they be disqualified? And then whose job is more important than whose? Uh, I think it's a really. It has a potential to be quite delicate, and I think that we need to keep that in mind. We certainly want to give some. Priority. Um, but those are just some of the things that I've thought about.
Yeah, and it doesn't mean saying they can't go there. It's just saying it's not. Uh, reduced and deconstructed for that. There's still other housing made available by this for any person to live there.
Excellent. Yeah, I get that. But I also see, you know, like. Some of the selection will appeal to some and others will see it as a huge trap and not wanna come here at all.
I I guess that's my question is what's. What's the concern? What would the concern be if if somebody from Far West? That lived in Far West moved to Harrisville and works in in Perry.
But we're trying to provide homeownership for, and as it started out, it was just actively employed within Harrisville City. So I'm expanding from what it originally was. Cause we're trying to get it to people who live and work here. And afford to live here. So the incentive is for people who. Work in Harrisville to move to Harrisville or to be able to move to Harrisville rather than just. Everyone in these sectors move to Harrisville. So the. What we're trying to incentivize here is the people who work local to come and live local.
You know, I mean, it would it would seem to me that that if we're trying to do this, given the fact that. Not every profession. That we're trying to focus on. Is available in Harrisville. We have to, we have to be able to broaden. In order to make it available for people who have those jobs. So we don't have a hospital in Harrisville. You know, we don't, we don't have, I mean, nurses, I mean, we'll be new nurses. Uh, we don't have a fire station in Harrisville. Um. You know, so I I think by the nature of what we're talking about, we have to be able to broaden this out if. This is in fact something that we wanna pursue. So um. You know, and that that really brings up, that begs the question of whether something like this is really needed. If we just have the right kind of housing options. For people, do we, we still need to?
I I think it, I I absolutely think that it's something that will be used um. And you know, it's an option. It's an option for maybe going from a town home or a condo to a home that's that's detached. That's, that's uh obtainable. And then it it, I look at it as a stepping stone or a way to get from one, one home. Type to another home type and. Um, I again, you know, there's, there are the homes that are um. They're already built and and older, older home styles and types, but those aren't always available. You, if you happen to get one and you and you like the area, great, but it's not, it's not something that's always readily available. And these won't be, once they're built and sold, they're not gonna be readily available, but I see it as a way for people to get from. From what they're currently in and allow them. To to move up or to progress. I mean, isn't that the American dream is to be able to have ownership, homeownership or ownership in something? And so I see it as a need um. And and I see it as if we do it right, I see it as being something that's popular or that's that's uh. Enticing, inviting to people. Um. As I, you know, as I think of of the reason that cities are put together and set up. Um, is to provide for its residents, you know, it's I, it's the, is to be able to allow them to enjoy. The community. So. But again, it's not my decision.
Right.
I think by nature of removing the. Restriction to where the people are located, we could reword it to say that essential workers means persons who are actively employed at jobs. Considered critical and essential. Take out the boundary restrictions because then by nature of the. Way it says including employees of Harrisville City, that will automatically include anyone that is employed in Harrisville. And then we don't have to include any.
Yeah, I like that.
So the sentence would read, critical and essential workers means persons who are actively employed at jobs considered critical and essential, including employees of Harrisville. And there may be, there are that sentence.
Yeah.
Would we, would we keep the employees of Harrisville City in the critical and essential line?
Yeah, I would keep including employees of Harrisville City.
Okay.
There's.
Yeah, I mean, cause in a way it's redundant, is what you're saying.
That takes away the boundary entirely.
Yeah.
Good.
It just means anybody that's working in those, that industry.
Well, we do have other government entities.
By nature, yeah, by nature, that would require Harrisville folks.
It's a local set. People working around the.
In the minutes.
Place that's based in Vermont.
So it feels good.
Which I don't want, that's a bad thing.
You know, we're just. We're just having a discussion here. I like that.
I knew too, there's no need to have redundant messaging here.
We wanna keep the list of what we consider critical and essential. Well, a lot of that was.
Yeah, yeah, we need to to really clarify.
During the pandemic, ninety percent of places tried to say they were critical and essential. Which would then include ninety percent of business types. So. Do we make that line still there or do we just? Get rid of the entire thing? Yeah.
Well, I think, I think if you look at it from a. From a small business owner. Owning a business in Harrisville. Providing tax revenue to Harrisville. I think that's critical and essential. I mean, I think that's. He might not be a a school teacher or a firefighter, but he provides a service to to the residents, the area of Harrisville, so. I I mean, just that.
And that's where this would feel very.
Yeah, allow. I, and again, I don't know. I'm open to discussion. If if critical and essential is only those that we have listed up there, then.
That's why I would keep it at, to try to help out those people. That may not otherwise be able, be able to afford it. I don't wanna make it available to just everyone in this.
Yes, I see your small business point. And then I think, so then do we send the courtesy to gas station attendants, grocery store workers, so on and so forth? These are all things that we need to function in our day to day. And then pretty soon we have a, we'll see this one, you know?
Yeah, and maybe, and maybe we do either stick with that. I mean, that doesn't become critical and essential, it just becomes.
Homeownership overlay.
Yeah.
And we're trying to incentivize homeownership. In every structure in Harrisville. So.
Well, then recognizing that the intent is to give these people opportunity first, right, right? I do think that's a pretty good list.
Yeah.
Though as stated.
So would um, would fire be considered first responders?
Yes.
Okay.
Paramedics.
I'm glad that was super clear to you guys. I just wanted to make sure.
Technically, you could um just have first responders and take law enforcement off the list since I think law enforcement is for sure their first responders as well.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why I asked that, so you read that.
I don't know if that one, I mean, technically, yes, it is redundant, but I don't think it's an inappropriate qualifier.
You you could do like first responders, I E, law enforcement. And.
I think, I'm just gonna give you my opinion. And do what you want. I think if we start putting in IDs and removing this and removing that. It gets a little complicated, so I would just recommend leaving out law enforcement, first responders, education, military, just leaving that. It's very cool. Yeah, pretty good.
Yeah. It's going at the local boundaries here and uh, I don't understand what you, this is a plus, that's okay. But then. Have we looked into where in the city this overlay map could go? I don't know, the last time we.
Yeah, more specific.
A few areas.
Cause we're, we're out just getting more and more limited.
Let me.
And where this could be eliminated.
So potentially it would go in any undeveloped part of Harrisville, right? It's an overlay zone.
Potentially.
So it would be allowed. To be proposed, but under the criteria in the ordinance. It would be a residential zone. I think that there might have been some confusion and discussion about. It being in other areas, but it would be, cause they would come in with their concept plans. I'm gonna kind of relay on Randy to correct me if I'm not interpreting it right, but the. Intent of the ordinance is for them to initially show us what by right the zoning today would allow them to develop. And so for example, let's just do it for example. Uh. Very few areas.
Like self-worship, I mean.
In our. City, but let's just use some agricultural property, for example, since that is a large. So say. This parcel here, just I'm randomly selecting, right? I'm not picking on anybody. I'm totally randomly selecting. Uh, if this parcel came in, this is an A one zone, so the. Developer would bring in a concept plan to show the city under A one zone, this is what I can build here. And this is how much the homes would be or the potential of the homes there. And then under the overlay zone, they would bring in. At least one, and as we've kind of talked through applying this, possibly more depending on what the goal is for the city, right? So there's been terms like attainable in terms affordable. So if we wanted an attainable house, if we use Ashler Cove here as an example, these homes are on RE fifteen lots and they're selling. For a minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we were gonna try and do attainable housing units over here, under the. New overlay zone, we could knock it down two hundred thousand dollars potentially, and then be down towards the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar. But do we consider that affordable? Probably not. Not a lot of those.
Right.
Essential workers could afford a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. So then if our goal is to get it to be affordable, then the density would have to be even higher. To get those, the the price of the home down. So in. I like, this is me, but it's obviously your decision. I like a lot of flexibility to negotiate with those. I think. Worked well for our mixed-use development because it's allowed us to maintain the commercial element in those mixed-use where people are just coming in and wanting housing.
This allows.
So it allows the flexibility.
Everywhere, which would get rid of our zoning map.
For you to recommend a city council, maybe there's concept A under the by right zoning. There's concept B for attainable housing and there's concept C to say, these are affordable houses. And then. The discussion moves to what the target is for the city. Are we just looking to put more housing in? Are we looking to put in affordable housing for people? What is our goal? Our goal, we defined last discussion, our goal is homeownership. So what does that look like for, for the city?
But does that get rid of our zoning map if we just say we have this overlay that allows. Any sort of zone to go in in order to achieve affordable housing?
I don't think so.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't get rid of your zoning map because you've still got, you've still got existing. Homes within that zone that still need to meet the zoning requirements for that zone.
But wouldn't the development in the A one, you need to meet A one zoning standards?
But if you're, if you're gonna do an overlay.
Then it's not going to be A one anymore. It's going to be RE fifteen. Or.
Well, it'll be.
It'll be whatever the, just like an MDA, it'll be whatever the MDA.
MDA.
Which means then the zone that's A one on it doesn't really have any relevance. They can come in and develop A one or they can come in and develop townhomes. So what's the point of having a zoning map at that point?
Well, the, they could just come in and develop townhomes because that's not.
Higher density.
The, well, the purpose, the purpose of this ordinance, to stay on track with the purpose of it, is to allow flexibility. With. Developing homes um. By right, what is allowed. Or negotiating what the city's goal is, but we could look at the individual property because there's gonna be a lot of factors that impact. The ability to develop it. Using this example. What kind of connectivity are we gonna have? Roadways, utilities, things like that, that are gonna all have to be discussed as part of that.
But I like the potential for more flexibility too, like you mentioned. We as, you know, our board might. Give. Three different recommendations to the city council to review. Because we have some flexibility instead of just saying this one developer wants to do this one thing right here. It gets either approved or denied, then we move on to the next thing, but if there's some flexibility, it it might be better longer term.
Does that put more stress on city staff to have? All that flexibility? So that. That works well for you guys.
Well, we're already working with the developer in the development process, you know, we're already. Talking about roads, connectivity, density, um, all of that. So it's not. If if anything, it's probably gonna put a little bit more work on the developer because we're now, instead of asking for an R one fifteen zone, we're saying it's A one. It's attainable and it's affordable. So you give us three concepts that meet those three criteria and. Um, you know, with your A one, you, I don't, one, one home per acre, I think, is what your zoning allows for.
And a new home in Weaver County on one acre minimum is over a million dollars. How is that?
Applicable. Anyway, it's yeah, it's attainable, it's just a.
So I I think, I think the work is going to be on the development side because ultimately that. Plan that he brings or those plans that he brings are coming back to you after we've reviewed them. And and you'll be making, we'll have some discussion and there'll be some decisions to make. So.
I just don't want this to be on every residential lot.
It won't be.
Yeah.
Cause some areas doesn't make sense to have the higher density that would create.
Well, you can have.
Agreed. And it's not gonna make sense to every developer to do this either, right? It's not gonna be affordable as far as, it's not gonna pencil for their projects, but.
Right.
To your question, Chad, I wouldn't say it's gonna be more work for staff.
Okay.
I would say it's.
Okay.
Equal to what we're doing.
Cause I know you review the MDA, we go over it, and then if there's any changes, we review that and keep going and. I'm wondering if that just opens up more work for you guys, but if you're, I mean, if that. You don't see it that, if you don't.
I think once a concept is decided, then the M D, MDA is developed around that concept that's been. Reviewed and approved, but there wouldn't be three different MDA's that go with three different concepts. There would be. A concept approved and then an MDA that would follow along with that. Concept.
And so going back to where in the city, I don't think it makes sense to put it on any of the A one parcels.
Again, I wanna make sure that this is understood. These are completely random parcels that we're.
I, I know.
Right? So, but to give you a visual, let's talk about. One here. Uh, so this is the north boundary of Harrisville over towards Washington Boulevard. And if this parcel were to be developed into. This overlay, it's currently RE fifteen.
Yeah, it's, it's surrounded by lots of smaller.
It's surrounded on the south by RE fifteen. This is Plushness to give you a visual around that side of the city. And if this were to be allowed to be developed under its current zoning, it would be RE fifteen, so it would be fifteen thousand square foot lots. If we wanted to talk about attainable, then we would increase the density so the homes could be potentially that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. If we wanted to allow affordable homes into this area. They, then we could talk about the density increasing to get the price point of the homes down around four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this parcel has access. There's stubbed roads in a variety of areas here, connectivity into the North Ogden City. Um, while this might be unincorporated, Weaver County, I I'm not exactly knowing, I guess it's North Ogden. And then. We already have stubbed roads available, so utility connectivity would be a little. Uh, more feasible in this area. Again, only random.
Right.
Parcel, just talking about the potential of using this overlay for it. And so the first concept plan would be proposed as RE fifteen and then anything else the developer felt. Like, and through the negotiations with the city. What is our goal for that? Do we wanna create attainable housing, affordable housing? Or leave it RE fifteen?
Well, I would say attainable housing, not necessarily affordable housing.
I think it's important for us to note too, Brent, and. That this doesn't eliminate the possibility of them just. Developing it under RE fifteen.
Yeah.
They could just come in by right and say we wanna develop it under RE fifteen.
Right.
Yes.
Maybe we should stick with attainable, not affordable necessarily. Just to drop it by a percentage or something, so that way it makes it easier to attain. Rather than trying to hit an affordable housing.
My recommendation would be allow the flexibility for both in the ordinance so that there might be areas that affordability makes sense.
I I agree with that. I agree with that because Harrisville is largely built out. We just have a few parcels here and there. That are available, that this thing could be applicable to this ordinance.
Now, if the state legislators came down and said we needed to do smaller lots and a adopt something for smaller lots, then we would have, we'd have to review our entire general plan.
Right.
And adopt a new general plan map that includes that zone uh in potential areas. And then by right, they'd be able to do, to develop under that.
We'll get to that if they do, it seems like they're a little hesitant to pass that decision guy.
We'll see, I know in a few weeks.
Yeah. That would be interesting where we're, where it's being built out like that.
But my opinion is that this is more flexible for. Right? For the city to protect areas that we may not want.
Right. Now, and and I agree with that too, because. If you want housing that's gonna be fairly consistent. With the, with what's around it, so not too totally different, so that we create pockets and. I just want to do this one. So I I hear you saying, I I like the idea of having the flexibility. Have, have we heard anything about um just? North of Paul Lyman? That the land is just right there.
We can, we can talk about that as narrative or a planning commission follow-up, but.
Okay, it's not on the agenda tonight.
It wouldn't be part of this discussion.
In terms of uh.
Potential area for development?
Yes.
Is that what your question is? Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. I. Fair play, so.
Are you talking about these parcels?
Yes.
One was already underdeveloped. Well, it's not, we're, we're working through it.
These are zoned, are three?
Yeah.
We don't have any.
Yeah.
No, we don't have any subdivision.
Yeah, we have a.
Yeah.
Uh, probably have a nice stories. Well, we have, it wasn't there. Again, that was a grandfather piece.
Right.
So. Can we look to the north a little bit?
Is that?
Very sorry to the. For the east.
It's not happy though, it's a happy, it's a happy.
So. You know, there there's. These parcels that. The, this one or even down on two thousand. Even more so right there, not.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Like. Those would just fit to stay by right. Right, that that that, I want to.
Well, they're, it's. Yeah, it's A one.
This might.
These are A one still.
Oh, they're still.
And this is a, uh, this is unincorporated.
Yeah, I knew that was unincorporated. But. I think it would tie in well for key. The pillow bat. We would all, what's.
R one ten.
Yeah, yeah. I like that. Okay, so we, we keep the ordinance, so it's. Affordable. And obtainable. Okay, so, so can we just go over like a scenario, so if somebody were to buy that? That piece of property on two thousand worth there, it's A one. And we put the overlay on that, what kind of density could we realistically look at?
Well, A one right now by right would have to be one acre lots.
Which is one or two houses there.
I don't know if those parcels are.
I, I, I think there's a number of things that play into that, because number one, what was the sale of the ground, or how much did you purchase the ground for? What is going to be the cost to get the improvements in on that piece of ground? And then, you know, under the, under the R one ten zone or R ten, I don't know what it is. You know, um, assuming that it's similar to what's laid out there, you could probably find out having a road going down the middle. And lots on either side and tying in up to two thousand, was that two, two thousand fifty north?
So let's talk about it this way.
Four, six, eight, ten, maybe, maybe fifteen, fourteen lots.
Let's talk about it this way.
Would it go down to the R ten?
That would be R ten, and then if you were to go, if you're looking at maybe something that's, that's obtainable, you'd obviously have smaller lots. I don't know, that's a, that's a tricky.
See, I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to see how our discussion actually rubber hits the road.
So let, let's put it on the basis of where the rubber hits the road, Montgomery Farms, just right in the same area. Right, red lines. Ten acre lots, houses prices were at the five hundred range. Ashla Cove across the street, RE fifteen.
Right.
Houses in the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar range.
Right.
But the house is probably different sized, yes, but, but land value. Is a drive, a huge driving factor in, in pro, in prices of homes.
It's not something we control.
And it's not something we can tr- can control, you're a hundred percent right, cause it's free enterprise, free money, but. But when we're going with this ordinance, helps us get that information to then understand. How, what the density looks like to get into that five hundred thousand dollar market.
Or what it could look like.
Or what it could look like to get that five hundred thousand dollar market, instead of what it would be, uh, it's leaving at A one and. These houses have to be over a million dollars and.
Right, but the problem we just saw is that it doesn't specify any sort of density, the density is inflex based on those prices.
It is very much inflex.
Whereas if we created a different zone or changed our general plan to say everything can be R one ten or create a new zone or something. Then at least we've set a density.
But there's also nothing in that density that has the footprint of the home considered. So you can, you could put a six thousand square foot lot, which is smaller than anything by rightly labbed in Harrisville right now. And they can still put a thirty five hundred square foot home on that.
Right.
And the price of the home, but using the, the ordinance that we're proposing, you can control that through the MDA.
But I'd prefer to control the house size than the density.
But you can't do that with the density, if you just put a, if you, if we change the zoning to allow R three again. And by right, they can come in and do a subdivision for R three, we have no say in the footprint of that home.
But what if we changed this ordinance to instead of changing the density on the area? Changing the footprint and other design factors of the buildings to meet those criteria.
Can it be both?
I'd prefer to have less flexibility on the density, because it's going to. Create problems with our zoning map, because then we're going to have incompatible uses mixed to each other. I feel like it's going to create two dens next to the last dense, and I don't think they're going to try to match what's next to it in this. Say you're saying, well, but what's next to it isn't affordable, we have to go denser than that.
But I don't know, and I could be wrong, but I don't know that we can write an ordinance that dictates how big, we can do an MDA.
Well, what if we know this ordinance to specify those sorts of things rather than just the density and the lot size?
But what?
Focus on more of the other aspects of what is causing these houses to be so expensive.
I'm not sure that that's allowed.
I guess.
Can you only speak up?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mentioned guys once, Phil Stonehouse, right?
One, one up.
Sure, that would be great, thank you. Yeah, sorry, so, good conversation, um, a- and, and I'm with, with Jenny on. Um, the flexibility, the flexibility is critical, because what it means to me as a developer is. If I come to you and say, you say you want a five hundred thousand dollar house, I'll leave, now it's my job to go figure that out. And then I'm gonna come back and present to you, okay, to get a five hundred thousand dollar house, we need to do this size of house on this size of lot. With this density, and then you guys say, we love it, or you say, we hate it. So it's completely um, discretionary, right, uh, so to think that it's gonna just show up everywhere, it doesn't, it's discretionary. Does it make sense on this parcel, it does on this one, um, so, so you have the discretionary piece, but it gives me the freedom. To make adjustments, to hit them, hit the price point, value that, that you guys wanna hit, does that make sense?
Yeah, but then if there was a set density on there as well, say we have a parcel that's currently A one and has a future land use of RE fifteen. Couldn't you take that and say, this is what I could do to make that five hundred thousand dollar house there as well?
Land is the largest component of the price of a home, more than the sticks, more than the bricks, more than. Concrete, more, so, so land is the biggest component, so what that would mean, so those rails would say. We can't do it, like, I can't build a small enough house to, to compensate for the cost of the land. And then the infrastructure to serve that also, right, so, so with fifteen thousand square foot lots, say I have five homes on a street. That share the cost of that street and that waterline, that's really, putting ten homes on that same street. You're dividing all that cost down further, right, and this is the savings that's going to, to the homeowners.
So if we created a zone that allowed those ten homes on one street and created a. Future land use map that said, instead of these A one being future RE fifteen, they're now. R one three or something like that.
Right.
Then you could work with that and say, this is how I make that house, so.
Yes, but do you know what happens when you create that zone? That land price goes up, the land is now more valuable because of the density, so. So that's the reason not to do it beforehand, because we as a developer, we need to contract the land at its current value. And pass the savings on to the new buyer, cause if we, if you rezone, then, then the land is more valuable. And thus now we have a bigger pie again to split between.
Cause they're, they're entitled to that many lots or those many lots on that.
Yeah, the best thing on a piece of land, whether, whether it's zoned or, or on the general plan, I mean, that's.
Right, but if we create that to allow those sorts of houses, then it would theoretically allow those sorts of houses on there. And we don't control the price of the land, and I'm not trying to change all of that, but to control the. Amount of density that goes in and the way that density goes in, I think it might be more beneficial. To update the general plan and potentially add a zone or two, that gives us those plot sizes, so that way.
Help me understand what your concern is.
So if I buy a house and it's right next to an A one lot, I know that's going to be A one and I can look at the. Future land use map and say, oh, it might be RE fifteen or R one ten in the future. And I know that, and everyone else in the neighborhood knows that's possible there. Where we have this overlay that creates ambiguity of what that density is, I don't know what that's going to get developed, and I don't have any concept of what. Could go in there, whereas if we put it on this map, then we know, and yes, everyone else knows that might change the price of the land, but. Then we have some expectation of what we're living next to, you know, if it's a future industrial, I know there could be a factory next door to me.
But I think, I think you might be a little short sighted, because. That A one property, that property owner could come into the city and petition to rezone that property something other than A one, so for you to. Or for us to think or assume that it is and will always be, is not very safe.
Well, I'm not saying it's always, we, we have a future land use map too, that says, these are the things we like it to potentially be rezoned to. Not that it will, but that way we could reasonably expect it to be something like that.
We could put that, we could put that critical or obtainable. Uh. Designation on future land use and say, these are areas where we would allow critical or obtainable housing. In these areas.
You gotta just.
Or we could identify it in the general plan.
Yes, I don't, I don't see it as ambiguity, I see it as flexibility, it's market driven, and also doesn't. Get some of our affordable and maintainable housing, we don't price ourselves out of those markets, like that's. It's a big deal and it's a real concern in our area, I mean, there's a reason why even entities like our school district buy parcels of land when they can, because they. You know, you can only do so much future projecting, but like Weaver School District owns way more parcels than they're going to be building on at this second. Cause they got it at a good price, at a good time, they know they're going to be able to put a school there at some point, and we wanna be able to. To do the same for our residents, you know, keep things in an area where we can have, have good people here, where we can increase our homeownership, I like the overlay.
What I'm hearing though maybe is that you prefer it accompanied by a map, but we have the mixed use overlay now, okay?
Potentially put it in half of those mixed use areas to allow the mixed use areas to incorporate this, rather than. Allowing it to go in every residential area, because I don't think it makes sense in every residential area, and to put an overlay map that says. Any residential property could become this, gives too much ambiguity for anyone trying to move here to reasonably know what's going to go up next to them. They need to have, you know, an option of three different types of things, rather than it doesn't.
Well, I, I imagine under, under that same idea, if you asked anyone that borders Ben Loon a golf course, they thought they bought a home. Next to a golf course.
Right.
They did, and I did, and I, and then I moved, and now I live by the rush, and I had zero control over any of that, and so there's only so much you can predict, predict. I, I use that as an example that you, you can only control what goes around you if you own that property.
Right, but we also updated our land use before the golf course changed.
Yeah, we, we didn't control that though, the golf course went under and we had to address it, so.
But we have that visibility to people there, what was potentially or what could go in there afterwards as well.
Well, I think, I think to the extent that the city has the ability to do that, again, the landlord or property owner, um. They always have the right to petition the city for something new from.
Right.
And the city always is, the city is obligated to listen to them. Um, and, and, and look at their petition, so, I mean, to the extent that it stands out, okay, we, we create a, a map. That shows, you know, in these areas, we would favor something in, uh, something that would be. Uh, affordable and or attainable, and then let the developer, if he so chooses, to purchase the property. Um, to go back and do that, but I worry, again, going back to the costs. If, if a property owner knows that this property has been designated as affordable and attainable. That value, he already knows that he can get more homes on that, therefore the value of the ground goes up. What we're trying to do is create a, a, a fair playing field where a developer comes in and says. I wanna develop a subdivision near city, um, I understand that it's going to allow me to do this. But I'd like to look at my options and see what may be available to me. Now, at the end of the day, the developer may say, you know what, it doesn't make sense to do what I think I wanna do, or he, you know, there's, there's, there's options. For us, so I just don't want, I, I'm afraid that we start labeling things and then the property value changes. That's what we're trying to establish is a fair property value, without the expectation that they're going to get. X number of lots on the property, because it's been. Future zone.
Sort of, sort of picture zone making map, what the difference, so we do the same thing.
But, but also one of the checks and balances of, they bring a concept between to be in front of staff. Then they bring a concept in front of planning commission, and then to ultimately get a rezone, even an overlay zone. Has to get approval by city council. So if it doesn't fit in that area.
But it determines that it fits in that area, if we don't have anything.
Map, post. Then planning commission, then cancel.
Right, I just prefer to have it on the map of these areas that could apply to.
What Chad was saying earlier about Harrisville being largely built out, I think that eliminates most of that. It's not like we're talking about.
Huge areas.
Millions of acres that are undeveloped.
No, we're talking about the rest of our city and make sure it gets developed, right?
I mean, how do this scenario, are we more likely, I mean, it seems to me that a developer would be more likely, rather than less likely. Trying and build out some of these one-off pieces of property if we have it like we're suggesting. Am I, am I, am I right in assuming that?
If you had more flexibility.
Yes, you mean, you're filling the little pockets that you're trying to? Yes, um, yeah, absolutely, uh, the little pockets are actually, they're kind of perfect, so to what Jenny said. Because often they have street stuff to them, utilities ready to go, you know, and bringing offsite utilities to a property, extremely expensive. Um, and just, and again, just, just adding cost, and I've got multiple projects right now that are, they're just sitting. Okay, I'm waiting for other people to develop just to get the utilities closer to me, right? Um, so that I don't have to pay the one point five million dollars it takes to bring a water and sewer half mile up the street, right, like, so. So, so, yeah, the little pockets are, are great, and, and like, like the golf course, I feel lucky, I, I live on the pole sack. I have almost a half acre, and, and I love it, um, and right behind me, built this last year, are forty five hundred square foot lots. I have five new neighbors on my one fence, right, um, but I'm okay. Some of my favorite things, but I'm okay, I didn't lose value, in fact, the value of my home's going up, um, and, but it's hard, right, like. To, to your point, it's, it's hard, you, you, you have an expectation, and I kinda learned this right in my career, don't ever let a realtor tell you it'll be open space forever. Because, because it, because nothing is forever, uh, unfortunately, but, but it's hard, right, it is hard. I recognize that, I, I see your point and, and I recognize that it's a difficult thing, and maybe putting you guys in a difficult position to vote on something like that. Where the public might not like it, you know, it's good for affordability, bad for the neighbors, and I understand that that can be a difficult political situation. Yeah, I mean, we have, we have a few plots left available to develop in Harrisville.
We have this overlay places because people.
And so I'm, I'm thinking the more restrictions we place in these one-off places, the less likely we're gonna get what we want. The less likely we are to control it, but if we, so I, I think I'm, I'm more in favor of the flexibility. Even having, we've had this conversation. Yeah, I mean, to, to give you one example, I, I'm, I'm working on this in another city, a- and we've just run costs on. Building a, a one-story bungalow, we have an eight hundred eighty-six square foot, a thousand and three square foot, and I think a twelve hundred square foot. Um, no garage, park tandem on the side of the house, small lot, um. Right now, today's prices, to get to fix and break soft costs, paying impact fees in that city, um, insurance warranty. Were two hundred and four thousand dollars just for that. And then we gotta buy land, and we gotta develop and build roads, and put in new utilities, and all the other pieces, um. A- and I'm looking at this trying to hit moderate income housing, um, and it's, this is in Utah County, and I need it to come in. Under two hundred and sixty-three thousand for moderate income housing, and that's, it's, it's not possible, I can't build it for that. Um, that's a, that's a two-bedroom.
It's great, I love it.
You, you go to, you go to Old Ogden, Old Ogden, and you've got bungalows, no garages.
Right.
I mean, those were rural or whatever houses and.
Mm-hmm, sugar house.
Yeah.
Room to put maybe a, a future.
Each time.
Garage in the backyard, so, so we're looking at those, and then we look, okay, what if we had a finished basement, so now you just doubled your square footage, right?
With the same footprint.
With the same footprint, that was putting us about four hundred and thirty thousand out the door, um, on a zero land basis, so. We gotta figure out the land on top of that, um, so, just, just some, uh, food for thought, like, I was running those numbers today, so I thought I'd share with you.
No, I appreciate you did, that you did, because.
Yes, that's very helpful.
For those of us that might not be as familiar with those numbers, like, it is a little mind boggling to think. The dramatic shift we've had in the last decade, dramatic.
The last three years.
Well, yes, for sure, absolutely.
Well, yes, for sure, especially the last three years, but, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So is there anything as a city that we can do to reduce fees?
Reduce services.
Well, that's a whole other conversation.
Actually, the city council is doing that today.
So the short answer is. Not a lot.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay.
The same inflation that has hit, and I just, I say this for reference because the city council related for the fee schedules.
Yeah.
But, uh, just doing our park impact fee, which hasn't been updated since twenty fifteen. So we had it updated and in the inflated rates of cost of infrastructure. It is, it, the initial impact fee that came back quadrupled what we're currently collecting. So then staff worked to try to reduce it as much as we possibly can. Before we presented it to council for their consideration because. And this is not, mind you, to build. The Harrisville main park to today's standards. This is just to replace what we have. This is just the cost. It would take to replace what we have, not to make it better, not to have the greatest sand volleyball court. But just to have a sand volleyball court, what those costs would be, be quadrupled. Because of the cost of construction, the cost of infrastructure, ever, everything has gone up.
Everything's.
And this, to say that. Things, the longer time goes on, the more things remain the same. It is really not happening right now.
Yeah.
We're, we're seeing some. Changes in costs due to COVID. Doing, due to unprecedented times, right?
All kind of thing in how it revolves.
And so that's just an example of. Can the city reduce fees? I've had this conversation with Buildstone. Cause I wanted to give them a heads up of, you know, give me, as a developer, give me the feedback. On what the impact fee will do to your process.
Right.
On building homes in Harrisville. Um, because, you know, certainly we don't want to cripple the industry of having growth come in. But we are going through a full, complete utility analysis right now for our fee schedule for our current residents and then we're also doing. The impact to the, to the growth. So that's probably a long-winded answer for what you were asking, but. Without losing. Cost to the city and putting the city at risk. The future, we, we don't have many flexibility with, with our fees. Are very little flexibility with those fees.
Right, right. Given how.
And if something were to transpire. Because of the inflated costs of everything.
Yep.
It's gonna cost us X amount, much more to replace it than what it currently was.
Right, right. Yeah, agreed.
Sorry, Brandon, we'll go back to you to. Continue part of the question on that.
Before we get too far in that, so we don't create a map. It basically puts the map over the entire city of Harrisville. And could potentially increase.
Put it over the whole. You've already got areas that are already zoned, so why would you put it over a subdivision that's already a subdivision?
It's an overlay zone.
But who's gonna come in and say, I'm gonna knock down fifteen houses, I'm gonna thirty in.
Yeah, but so if you put it over every. A one lot that already has a house on it that may want to subdivide and become smaller, you're putting it over those houses too. But they're still also subdivisions. But if you put it over every vacant piece, then theoretically any landowner in Harrisville can say. Well, this zone might apply to me just as much as if there was a map that detailed every vacant place in Harrisville. Wouldn't passing the ordinance be the same as putting out a map that says. Anywhere in the city could be applied for this.
Um.
As far as the land values and other things go.
I. I think. I'm just gonna give you my honest opinion. I think the best way to approach this, Nathan. Is to say, these are parcels that are available in, in the city of Harrisville.
Right.
If you developer. See a piece of ground as for sale and you desire to purchase it. And you want to know what the city will allow. We will first look at the zoning that is currently applied to it and say, this is what you can get. The next question the developer may ask is, is there anything I can do to allow for a little more density?
Right.
We would then say, well, we have, uh, an obtainable. Or an affordable. If you choose to do one of those, then we would need to see how you plan to build an attainable development. And an affordable development. So now you're preparing three things for us to review. It would come to the staff, we would review it and say, you know what? The affordability is not going to work in this zone, just simply because. You're already around our one fifteen zone, but maybe an attainable would work. And so we've worked through that process, but I think, I, I really think, Nathan, that, that we would be. We would be creating a problem that we don't want to create. And I know you have an issue with the zoning and the zoning ordinance. But we as a staff are also looking out for the interest of the city, the best interest of the city. But we also walk a very fine line when a developer comes in and when a property owner wants to sell because. It is their right to sell the property. And it is also, you know, we all want to get as much money out of our property as we can. I just sold my house. Like I didn't go to the guy that was buying my house and say. You're a good guy. I'm gonna sell you two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars cheaper. I, I wanted the highest price I could get and that's everybody's attitude.
Right.
So if we start putting a, a designation on property that's available. Then there's an expectation that the property should sell for what that is designated where.
Right.
I think if we can just say, we want to work with developer to create something that works well, that fits within our community. That's what we want to do. And, and not inflate the prices because the concrete's already inflated, you can't control it.
But passing this ordinance wouldn't or could inflate those prices because a property owner in Harrisville. Knowing this ordinance is there could sell it based on the fact that this ordinance could apply to it.
Could, could apply.
Well, as a property owner, most people will do their due diligence before they purchase the property. Most developers will go in and say, okay. I'm interested in purchasing your property, but I've got to go through the due diligence phase of this. And he's gonna come in and he's gonna see what he can do.
Right.
With the city.
And he's gonna see this ordinance.
And if he, if he sees the ordinance. Great, let's run it through and we as a staff will tell you. That does or doesn't work. It's not going to work in this area or it may work in this area. It goes to the planning commission. The planning commission could say, yeah, staff, you guys are up in the night. We don't like it at all. Out.
Right.
Or you could say, you know what, with a few changes, we're willing to work with you. Let's, let's make a recommendation to the city council for. For preliminary approval.
I just don't see what the difference is between this ordinance existing for the city and a map existing for part of the city.
Well, it's flexibility to me. It means flexibility.
Yeah.
And so if a developer came in and said, hey, by right, I can do this. Uh, there's an option for this particular ordinance for this overlay to go over this property. Let's develop two or three plans and we'll take it in instead of just saying, oh, there's only one possibility for this area. It's not gonna work for me. They either back out of the deal or they have to seek through for zoning approval, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, but we're putting an overlay zone and they know there were those options. Put some of the property owner. And I feel like with this ordinance in place, the property owner should know about this ordinance too. And sell it based on.
But there are regardless.
It's not used by right though.
No.
The.
But every overlay zone would do that. The mixed use overlay zone does that. It's not by right, but it has the potential to become that. And the ordinance will tell people any vacant property in Harrisville could be. Part of this ordinance and they could sell it based on that too. So I just don't see why. No map makes it any better when the ordinance itself. With or without a map. Will potentially inflate those prices because the property owner will know. You could turn it into this and sell it based on that.
You could, but there's no designation that says you are entitled to that. As a map would say. No, you're entitled to a.
The map doesn't necessarily say you're entitled to it either. It just says it's a possibility.
But if you're gonna, if you're, well, on your future land use.
Yeah. Isn't a potential overlay though, and it's not applied already. They still have to rezone it. That's a potential. It's not a guarantee.
The developer could also come in and say, you know what, your future says it's R one ten, but it's actually, uh, A one and I'm gonna buy the A one property. Cause I'm not gonna develop to R one ten, but the next day he goes in and he submits a subdivision plot to the city for R one ten.
I know. I understand that. I just.
So I think we're talking in circles. Because we need to.
I just don't think there should be a map.
Hold on a second. We were talking in circles. This is going to take all night. We're not even gonna move on to the next item. So what do we need to do to move on to the next item? I'm being a little bit impatient because I thought we've talked over this about eight times.
Oh, that's okay. Let, let's just. Go with it, cause that's.
I, I totally understand your point.
There's no action on it. It's just a discussion we can.
I agree, and I think we've covered every point about eight times and I think we can come back to it anytime.
Yeah.
But I think we need to get to our next point because we don't want to be here till midnight.
Okay, go on, move along then. That's what I hear.
I will.
We'll relive with that on it.
If I changed the CHOZ to an EWHOZ, does anyone care about that? Or can we change it since I don't like the CHOZ?
My recommendation is to not clear, not classify it as an essential worker homeownership overlay. So, uh.
That would be.
My recommendation would be change the name to. Um.
Was the concern with the.
Similarity to other things that I don't want to.
He's, it's just the acronym itself, not the, not the meaning.
Yeah, just the acronym. So if we take out the worker part, but then change it to an essential homeownership overlay zone. Change it from a C to an E?
That would be, that would be a discussion for.
I'm just wondering if anyone else has objections to that.
So. You want it to just be called a homeownership owner overlay zone?
Or essential homeownership overlay zone. So I changed it to essential worker homeownership overlay zone.
Brandon and Jenny, we're starting to say something. I, I would just, I, I kind of like. Your idea of maybe it's the. Homeownership overlay zone or a, it, I, I just had a hard time. With the essential worker classifying as a, as a specific essential worker. That's an element of the ordinance. But I, I think we have to go back to our goals that we set last, which is, is the homeownership element.
Right, so, right, not just for essential workers, but for.
Right.
I like that. So you were suggesting like it's just an, an HOZ?
And, yeah, a HOZ.
A HOZ.
That's fine. I don't, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just as far as technicalities could.
And the, and the city council could come up something and throw it out the, the door. They might have something they like.
Right.
That's true.
We being our.
Just as long as they don't go back to the CHOZ, I'll be okay.
I think.
Okay, what's the next one?
Yeah, sorry, Brandon, next, next section, as of here.
Um.
Oh, sorry, are you still discussing? No, I was just asking if you have anything. Some, some of us have talked a lot.
We'll go to the next section or we're going to come back to this discussion at another time since we've. Discussed it for so long already.
I'm fine to come back. I just feel like we, we've talked about the same points many times.
Yes.
Well, that's most of the changes in here. Other than the, we have ten to twenty years that we should.
What was the, can you remind me on the ten to twenty year thing? Did we, were we not comfortable with the ten and we wanted to go to twenty or were we? They talked about deed restrictions?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I feel like our conversations, I, I read my notes were to bring the deed restriction time down. Not, not, uh. Yeah, but I, I thought it might be less than ten. Is it redland on here?
Well, it's it, it's writing.
On here, I.
Oh.
I redlined it to twenty because I like the deed restriction to see the length of time that an individual is owning the home. So that way it can apply to subsequent homeowners as well. Rather than just being an initial.
Yeah.
Deed restriction, I want it to continue. Or future. Ownership.
That makes sense.
To prevent them from then turning it into a rental at the end of the deed restriction. Which was the thought on extending that. Not that one person has to occupy it for ten or twenty years. But that the deed restriction on the.
Goes with the house.
Same price and such. Stay with that house to promote future homeownership as well as just initial homeownership.
So what an odd discussion we had was. That. You know, a, 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 a person gets into the home. Correct me if I'm not remembering correctly, but we, somebody moves into the home, we put a deed restriction of, of five years. Um. They sell the home at year three, they're still able to get some of the benefit of the increased price of the home, but not maybe the full benefit. But after five years, they're able to.
I don't know if we can do, that was, so, so Lehigh City had done, had done, um, an equity grab in that. You couldn't, you couldn't buy the house and sell it the next year and pull out a whole bunch of equity, right? That was sort of trying to protect them. But I felt like that was. Removed.
Okay.
Um, and I, I don't remember in this one.
Didn't hear.
No, cause I don't think that is in your, I think this deed restriction is more about being owner occupied. Um, the, the priority for selling the home is given to the, to those essential workers. Um, those are the two main deed restrictions, I think.
So this is just to keep that deed restriction on the way, the priority on the way they sell it. And to keep it ownership focused for those twenty years. Not tied to the specific purchaser, the first one, but to.
Yeah, market value would. Which I personally agree with, like, and Lehigh's actually changed their tune since going to the council. They were like, we want to take that out.
Right.
Same kind of thing, but, um.
So, so by extending it from ten to twenty. Um. Help me understand the. The pros and the cons to that. I, I, I can, I can.
I think it just keeps it owner occupied.
It keeps it owner occupied and it makes it so when you sell it, you first allow it to be sold to. The essential worker group rather than the general public sales.
But there's, there's a timetable on that, right?
Yes, there's a timetable on that. So if that time passes, then you can sell it as soon as. But just to keep it in this. One overlay zone longer than just one person. The train promote those sorts of people moving into our city and staying in the area. Whether that person sells it after one year or after. Fifteen, I don't care. I just want to keep it in that group and allow those things to continue.
Okay, so you want it to be, um, available first, have priority with the essential workers longer.
Exactly. Yes.
Is what you want to say.
And the thing you're saying. That a homeowner doesn't buy, and they're ten years. Move out and put it up for rent.
Yes, exactly.
So it's. Yeah, I was just reading some of the state legislature around this and some, some of the. Deed restrictions they talk about in the state legislature are more around TOD areas of owner occupied. There's always twenty-five years. So. It's really a matter of preference.
And I like to keep it owner occupied for longer because this is a homeownership thing.
Yeah.
Not a. Turn it into rentals. And so I prefer to make sure it's home owner occupied longer than just.
I see where you're.
Ten years or four years. Because that promotes the ownership, whether it's the first owner or the fourth owner. It promotes.
This doesn't affect the development or the building of the home. It only affects the buyer.
Exactly.
So.
It's just to pay it forward.
Yeah.
Give the next person.
All right, if you get in that way, you should want to pay it forward to people in that sort of situation down the road.
Okay, can we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's a good call.
The other thing we're coming to was the. Target price.
Standing this would also be on discussions.
We don't have to discuss it soon for long, we don't.
No.
No, you're right. We don't, but sometimes that's just what happens. Cause we have just questions, we get other questions.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Change the target price zone there to a radius around the property rather than the city limits, which is what it used to be. Or specifying any other city area. It's just a radius from the property that encompasses most of the county.
Big.
Yeah, what do you prefer to?
Well, okay.
I see a map. I'm like, how far from last?
And let it last, and let us be.
Yeah, that's what.
Well, that would be. Miles, but this is why.
It's most of the county is what they're saying. So instead of just saying.
The city limits or something like that to include the areas around it.
The two miles. Radius would probably be.
Okay, so.
Probably be worse.
Two miles instead of four? Yeah.
Question is, is how do you determine what the median home price is in? Question is, is how do you determine what the median home price is in two mile radius?
Yeah.
I can go to the M L S and I can pull current listings.
Yeah.
But what if there aren't, I can give you two miles, what if there's only two homes, so, so that's hard when you get, when you go smaller and smaller, so there's consider, some consideration.
Yeah.
Generally, the state legislature goes around the median home price of that county, that's kinda how the state is implementing it, um, but just to add some considerations for you guys, it's.
I don't think four miles is very big.
Radius, yeah.
It doesn't get all the way through Ogden.
Right.
And it'll go up north and east and west to what's around it as well, so. We can make it three. Yes, it's big enough.
But I mean, what do you, what do you think?
Maybe two. I've heard some cities talk about, they're redefining affordable. They're finding the median price of the home in their city, and they're saying, hey, for less. If I'm bringing down the median price home in the city, that's affordable, it's not subsidized.
Affordability.
It's not low income housing, that's, so that's, we're seeing this, kind of this redefinition of what's affordable, so it's kind of.
More affordable, is this one?
It's more affordable.
Yeah.
And it's lower on what the median is, so.
And that's how it's worded this, I can, do we wanna make it two miles, do we wanna draw it on a map and see where that comes to? And come back to this radius?
I'm partial to the county for a number of reasons, like ish, like closer to the fort, because of, because of comps, because.
Yeah. Yeah.
When people are like, oh, I, people do that a lot in our area, is they home shop by counties.
Right.
They don't just home shop by city, um, once in a while, but.
Right.
It's really by county, everybody knows that prices go down a little bit when you hit Bucks other county, and prices go up a little bit when you hit Davis County, that's just how it is. Whether you get into Davis County, into Salt Lake, into Utah, if you pay attention to the market even a little bit.
Right, so this three to four mile radius will bias it to the north or south side of the city as well, which will help with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because the different sides of the city are different.
Yeah. So. I mean, is, is four miles gonna give us enough diversity?
Yes.
Are we, are we gonna be capturing more low income housing versus more higher income?
The laws on which side?
Right.
You capture the side next to Pleasant View, you're gonna get more of their type of thing, if you capture the side next to Ogden, you're gonna be getting more of theirs. So it's a variety within that radius from.
With that, yeah, the four.
Where you put the.
About in three point seven five. Sorry.
Yes, we sure could.
Is there a reason for that?
Just so we can get on our tabellers. Uh, if you wanted to.
Just maybe measure it on Q Gizmo and see approximately what the tidler would be.
I can take this, I can take the map of Harrisville, and I will take it to our office, and we will draw a series of.
Invented circles.
ripples across your city to see what encompasses the largest part of the city, start with, here with going to ten.
Can you, from. From the corners as well, to see what encompasses it from that top corner versus from the other corners as well, to see.
The corners of Harrisville?
So from this, this corner, to this corner.
At least a couple of them.
Oh, I see.
Versus. Well, I would do to the corner on eighty nine rather than into the, yeah, up in that area versus down in the other side.
Okay.
Just.
So is the intent to, and this is a question, not, not a comment, but is the intent of the radius to make sure the homes.
Busy area.
Is it a poten- potentially in the north side, if you're encompassing more of the Pleasant View?
Yeah. Well, I'm too.
No, not necessarily higher priced, because there, there are a lot of cities that put their higher density on our boundaries, that's what, that's why I was asking the question, is it?
No, I'm not saying it's higher priced.
Right.
Right. That's exactly, yeah.
Is the intent to have the median home price. Potentially higher or lower in different areas of the city, or is the intent to, to do the median.
Well, that, and.
Yeah, it just needs to be more than.
Price of the county. It's a good question to throw out there.
The job of the impreacher.
Different areas of the city, just to say.
I'll tell you, with, with the M L S, the narrowest I can bring down a search is by city. I can't, I can't like, I, I can't really say, give me all the data, you know, two mile radius, my thing, I need to confirm it, but.
Can, you can draw independent boundaries, and it'll pull them up.
Okay, I really do.
And that way you're not limited to just Harrisville, because if you're on the border of Harrisville and, uh, North Ogden.
Or even.
You may wanna put a comparable towards what's across the street, rather than just what's in the city itself, which is why a radius makes a little more sense for us.
Oh, oh, oh. It sounds good to me.
Yeah. It'll come back to that.
Thanks for all the hard work you've done to this, for sure.
Did we hit all of your points on target price? Like, I know we talked about.
There's a different section on the initial sale with the deed restrictions, if I can find the page on it. Where I crossed out the percent over, and really just said we should set the target price at, at or above that.
It's.
So instead of putting fifty percent over the price, just put the price at that hundred and fifty percent. So that way they have a percent value.
It's C, it's C six on.
Yeah.
A, a little feedback, if you put the price at a hundred fifty six percent. Developers will hit one hundred and fifty percent.
Yes, they will.
Right.
So.
But that's where we take into consideration what that price is set at.
Yeah.
In order to come at it.
I'm an impleter, right?
No, it's true, it's just, it's the same thing with school fees, if we say you can charge up to a certain amount, people are like, well, then I would rather go for the cap to make sure I have all my fees covered.
It's true, right? Yeah, that's what we see, we see with impact fees except for with Jenny, apparently.
But, but if we put a percentage in there, they're gonna try to target whatever that max percentage is as well.
Yeah.
So rather than putting a percentage in there, I just prefer to deal with one number and not two. That's all I'm saying, so we can adjust whatever that target price ends up being, but just set it at that price, not above that price. So that's the only other thing I had with target price.
And that's a tricky one to word, I mean, that's been on my mind since we very first went over this.
I, I feel like, I feel like, you know, it's, it's, I think.
Percentage, whatever percentage we need to make that work.
Because ideally, I think a developer would. Tell you a target price that they felt comfortable, could handle some increase in lumber because of tariffs or something, I don't know.
Right. Yeah.
And, you know, hopefully, we, we would, we're watching out and trying to protect ourselves from the unknown.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we're trying to hit it a little bit, the target price that you guys want, so that's where, that's where the flexibility comes in, and I think. Down below, you redlined out a section of this flexibility, this right here, the density design configuration.
It's just changed it a little bit, yeah.
Wait, I see it's crossed out, it just changed to that line before?
Yeah, it's just to the four mile radius in there, and that way. In the concept plans, we've got the adjusted development standards and all of that, I don't think we need it up with establishment of the target price.
Yeah.
We can establish the target price, and then go to the concept plans of adjusting the development standards to meet that, rather than putting it all in that target price section. So.
Yeah, I have to think about that, cuz it's critical to the target price.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I really agree with you. I think we can keep going and just see where it is coming, so it's not in there twice.
Okay. That sounds good.
That's only coming to the perfect place.
Other comments or questions about?
What, what do we wanna try to find out this by?
Well, we're just set right there, um, essential worker. Do we, do we wanna not do that and go back to the. Critical resident, cuz we're talking about essential worker plus new. First time.
I think that's just the name of the zone, it's changed the acronym, it'll change.
No, which, so.
Yeah.
So we'll just go the home ownership.
Over there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the name of the zone.
It's, it's throughout, so.
Good, good, okay, thank you, yes.
So the next material change.
These are.
I was like, the, the timeline we have kind of identified with the ordinance is work sessions and. And we have, we will hold a public hearing because this is a land use ordinance, so we were anticipating getting from public feedback in March.
Okay.
At your March meeting, uh, advertising a public hearing and taking them, and depending on where. The planning commission feels if it's ready, there's, there's a lot of feedback you wanna consider, we'll have it on there both ways, you can table it, you can. Recommend, um, and then depending on that, it would move to city council in April or May.
Probably in May, I think, is that where we can get more feedback through, March to April, there's a nice leaving those open throughout more time.
Not necessarily.
A brush. Yeah.
But that's. That's the process we have to meet.
Okay, thank you.
So, and it's not a, an action item on your agenda tonight?
So I don't think we're taking that immediately changes much of that, I just didn't want it to have a sense of urgency there, just as followed by the approval.
Well, so there is a sense of urgency there, um, and also I can speak to that, or we can, and what that is, so the idea is. We would, we would want the overlay zone approved, but in the same meeting, the development agreement approved.
Right. Right.
That's where the immediate comes in, because the more time that passes, the more risk there is to not be able to build at that price.
Right.
So that's, that's the, so if, if it's the wrong word, I mean, maybe it says that, like, they're both approved in the same public hearing, you know, or something like that.
Potentially, yeah.
That's, that's kind of.
It's, it's, it's separate agenda items.
That would work.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It does.
It's a separate agenda items.
You're right.
Yeah, they're all, they're all public hearings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's just more of a peremption?
Yes.
Okay.
The next material changes in the next one, right? Changed the ladder to, to the former, is there a reason that wouldn't work?
What ladder?
So, we're talking about the preliminary application requirements, and where conflicts arise between this code, the concept plan, or the development agreement. I changed it from the concept plan of development agreement controlling in conflicts to the code controlling in this conflict.
Typically. Yeah, I was gonna say, typically, the development agreement overrides the regulation.
But the development agreement shouldn't have a contradiction with this code that creates the development agreement.
So with the underlying zone.
Right, but we're talking about this code, we talked about this ordinance. Being the one that controls, so that way there aren't conflicts with this ordinance, but then the development agreement overrides our ordinance, because there's some conflict that it then. They don't want them to write in a change to the ordinance in the development agreement, and then get around the ordinance we're creating.
The, well, the, the, the development agreement. Has to be approved. In the same manner as.
Right, I just, if there are conflicts between the two.
Right.
We should go back to this code and say, you weren't allowed to put something that conflicts with that, there shouldn't be any conflicts between it. And I understand that.
This code, the concept plan, or the development. Yeah, and typically legal, and we can check with our attorney, but typically, the development agreement is the one that.
But they shouldn't be able to get around the ordinance by putting in a conflict that then negates the ordinance.
Well, I will follow up on that, and I answer for you.
Thanks. And appreciate that, because I don't want to. You know, create incentivize people to create loopholes. That's where that comes from. Think. That's about it, I move out to comments. Yeah.
Comments from other commissioners? Not at the moment for me.
Yeah. It'll take some time to review it. I think that's it for this.
Takes me longer.
I don't have to think through things. Right, well.
The older I get, the longer that time is spending, I guess.
So just a little reminder, if you do have continuing feedback, to send it just directly to Brandon and I to eliminate any conversation between you guys.
That way we're not having a meeting elsewhere.
Thought I might.
But this did get sent out to everybody a week ago, so we have time to make our own, all of our own sense of repays here. Just if you do have a moment, it's coming up before our next meeting.
Don't remember. I don't remember getting this.
Okay. You should have, we, I did get it, I didn't, I didn't send. I just sent it off. Sent it out, we will make questions, we send it to make sure that you have it, and then we will double check to make sure you're right.
That's okay. Thank you. It's characters unique.
Thank you, yeah.
I go through it. I really appreciated having the time to go through it.
Guess that would help, I think, you know.
We've reached the end of it, any final comments, Brandon?
I don't have any, um, I just appreciate being able to work through and talk through these things, you know, these, when you're developing a, a.
Yes.
An ordinance like this, it takes time, and we need to make sure that we get it right.
Exactly.
Right?
Do we need to circle back and say, tell everybody how it's earlier?
No.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's, there's some chocolate there if you want.
Just checking.
Any other discussion?
You tell me this, from, I feel better.
I think so.
Right, there's no other discussion. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which, for your clarification, we moved the election, asked for that discussion, so that you would be here for it.
Thank you.
So, that moves us to what used to be agenda item number three, which is the election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty five. Anyone who wants my spot, you get to direct the meetings, a vice chair gets to direct them when the chair is not there. You also get to go to project management, which is second Thursday every month at nine AM. We get to just sign flats and maybe official planning commission approval for things.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
It's all, it's up.
It's awesome.
Nominations, if anyone wants it, or if you.
I'll throw my hat in the ring for chair.
Good. I'll, I'll second it.
I'm against you.
Yeah.
Just. So we have choice.
Let's get in choices.
Good.
Anyways, you wanna put in for this?
I, I'll probably not be available on second Thursday at nine AM, so.
For chair, that would be, yeah, that wouldn't work as well. Chad, you wanna put your hat in the ring, you're just, okay?
No, I've had my time, I, I want, I want other people to have the blessing.
Should we take nominations for the vice chair at the same time, or should we vote on chair first?
I think we vote on chair first. And the other one that's not the chair, could be the vice chair.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay, okay. So all in favor of Angie being chair? Okay, that's three votes, I guess I don't have.
Your voice, brother.
Hey.
That works, and then, yeah. They placed on Chad's motion to have the second place be vice chair, that puts me as vice chair, any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay, Angie, you get to take over from.
After this meeting.
We just elected you as chair.
We did, but it goes back to March.
All right.
It's, it's, it's a good experience.
Yes, let's go with that.
Get really deep and involved.
Yeah, that way I can still get to my meeting. Tomorrow morning, and then you can take over after that.
See you. Okay.
Let's redo that, there was no second to the question, oh, for, for the actual election of the chair. There was no second, it was called for a vote, so let's make a formal motion.
Okay. I need a motion to make Angie the chair planning commission.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion, can I?
And I will second that. All in favor?
I, I.
Hey, do I need a motion to make me the vice chair?
Please, just make it formal.
I'll make a motion that I become the vice chair of planning commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
I, I, thank you.
Very good, thanks for keeping us.
Now it's been normal with motions.
Well, it is.
It just says.
Oh, our results.
It looks this, well, we did have a motion, normally, you know, and a second on that, but yeah, as far as the voting, we'll make that. Perfect, then we move on to public comments. This is the time for anyone here to come up and speak your mind, and theoretically, there's a three minute next one, but there's not very many, I wish it also took.
I'll go try to keep it three. Greg Montgomery, um, appreciate being able to listen tonight, I, I think, one of the things, I just go back years ago, and I know. Probably wanna go this way, I'm going back before you were born, but we had a professor once, and he was from Berkeley, this is nineteen seventies. And the one thing he taught was, is you gotta keep it simple, the more things you add to it, the more is gonna go wrong. And I think one of the things that, that's important is you look at how you're gonna dictate pricing of what is. Affordable or what is achievable housing, I think the simplest thing to do is always use. The, the hot publications coming out every year of the census update of what is the median income? Of Harrisville or the county, one or the other. And let that be, say, this is what we're trying to determine, whether it's. Affordable housing eighty percent, whether it's attainable, maybe that's a hundred and twenty percent of median. And remember median is fifty homes or less and fifty homes or more. It's not an average, it's at this point. In, in those, that information. And say which one is what you're trying to achieve, that you feel can hit those, those critical people. And then let that be your guidance and then let the developer determine, okay, can I meet that or not, rather than. Getting too many things going on, just keep it simple. And say this is the price we're trying to get. And where would you look at is what is the percent of the median housing price and is it Harrisville? Because Harrisville is less than every one of your neighborhoods around and every other community. Cause you know, I shared it through those charts. And yeah, Harrisville is less median income than, or median housing than, than any other community around. What is gonna be the determinant you want to achieve to try and say we are attainable or we are important? And keep it simple that way. Uh, just offer that out there, just as you think about that. So what you make of the better it is. But thank you for the abreach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will move on from public comments to commission and staff follow up. You guys have any follow up or will we have the staff take us into our training?
No.
Any, any updates on golf course?
Yes, actually we held a pre-construction meeting for the golf course, so you'll see dirt moving and they're starting.
Okay, so. Owner and developer have come together now and.
The new owner. Likes your homes, purchases the property.
Oh, okay, that's.
Was, was that in the gesture?
That was a little green. We really talking about this now?
Likes your home, purchase the property and they held their pre-construction meeting with the city and they are moving dirt and starting the. Lower half of phase two eight.
Is it gonna look like the original plan?
The part they're building now will.
Okay.
What's, uh, been approved.
Okay. And are they planning on maybe changing other parts of it?
Commercial elements, the, and the master development agreement was updated by the city council in October. And allowed some flexibility on the commercial to come out towards the highway potentially. So they're not. Developing that northern portion right now, when you're doing some market analysis to see what, how that could impact. What they can bring there. Um, we had a. Permit update meeting with you done yesterday to talk about the timing of the signal and what, what will warrant the signal being put in there. As you're aware, the city is putting in the western road seventeen fifty north. We are out to bid for contracts on that to get that road built. Mostly built this season, but whether the asphalt comes this season or not, but that, that is being.
Winter, this construction season.
This construction season, twenty, twenty five. And, and we've, just for your information, the city council approved. Contracts for our federal, we received two million dollars in appropriation funding from the federal government. And another six hundred thousand dollars from GOEO, the governor's office of economic opportunity. For the city to put that road in. So that's what's paying for that road. And then the signal will be determined by. How many housings units go in at what time and what the timeline on that looks like. You'll see activity there if you get questions from. Concerned residents, tell them to reach out to city hall or you can answer that. Yeah, it's moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great to hear. Okay.
Any other questions, Chad?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. Jenny, follow up other than the training or just?
No, it's the training for tonight.
Okay, well, let's move into that then.
Let's begin. I will make this as concise as possible for you all. Soon as my slide is in.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
That was concise.
You wanna stay for?
I stayed for during the.
There we go. Okay, so our public and open, our open and public meetings act. So the. The legislator finds and declares that the state, its agencies, the political subdivisions exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. And because of that, and due to that, it's the intent that they take their actions openly and they conduct their deliberations openly. So what constitutes a meeting? A meeting is the convening of a public body or a specified body with a quorum present. So in our case, it's. Three or more of you together constitute a form. Uh, what a meeting is not. If you run into each other at the grocery store, if you happen to go to a social event and. Things like that, that is not a, that's not a meeting. No. In the case of the city council, if no public funds are appropriated or being expended. That's not a, that doesn't constitute a meeting. So when we do our budget retreat, some technically. The public body is convened solely for the discussion or implementation of administrative or operational matters where no formal action is required. So technically, we could do this training outside of a formal meeting. What are the city's public bodies for Harrisville? We have city council, planning commission. The appeal authority, the board of trustees for the four mile special service district, and I just noticed. Our project management is not listed here, but we do consider that because by ordinance. People have to come to our project management meeting. That is a public meeting. We need all the public departments for that, open meetings for that. Public notice requirements to hold a meeting, we have to give annual notice. This is always adopted at the city council level, level. Of the anticipated meeting schedule for city council.
Changed our city, our meeting schedule because they wanted to switch us days.
Uh, they, they talked about that. They didn't do that. So they, they adopted the same meeting schedule for city council, which is the second Tuesday of the month. Every second Tuesday is planning commission and every second Thursday is project management. The notice must include the date, time and place where the meeting is going to be held. We have to give twenty four hour notice for the meeting. On the public, the Utah public notice website, we also send it to the standard examiner. And the agenda must include the topics to. Specificity, so it has to have a level of what we're gonna be discussing, so. And closed meetings, this is applicable to city council. If the city council holds a closed meeting, sorry, that. Is very small to read, but there's certain conditions that the city council can enter into a closed meeting. It's mostly related to personnel issues, litigation. Pro, pro, property, sale, purchase or sale, property, city owned property, also, um. Yeah, mostly do. Uh, security, deployment of security devices. Obviously, we don't wanna be discussing what the city's security measures are in a public meeting. Those are ideas of when, and state law defines. We did do a closed meeting.
Okay, I was gonna say, cause I, I could only hear like.
Cut you out of that, but then they can have an open meeting afterwards too.
We do go back into an open meeting after a closed session, yes. Uh, public records include written minutes, recording of the me, the meetings and must be available to the public within thirty days. So draft minutes have to be available to the public within thirty days for them to review. And that is, those are the main points of holding a public meeting. So that's why we give the reminders. On. The. Please don't have conversations outside of this meeting. It includes email correspondence, text messaging, anything like that. Needs to be separate communication to the city staff if you have individual questions, so that we're not having. A meeting outside of the public meeting.
I don't think we, we didn't.
Any questions?
But we probably shouldn't.
Any questions?
Uh, other than if we just happen to meet at the store and just.
You're welcome for that.
What do you think about that?
Please refrain from any city business discussion outside of.
Also don't just sample a form of us.
Right, but does, does that also, I mean. If it's just the two of us and we're talking about stuff, we're clearly not a quorum.
Technically, you'd be okay, but we don't wanna get in great areas.
Right, and I, and I.
So yeah, you could.
Okay.
If you just come to me, but then if I go to someone else, then that's three of us having a meeting.
If, to answer your question, if you happen to bump into two people in the grocery store, please don't talk about city but business.
Correct.
So that, any other questions on?
I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Is that slide deck sent to us or do you post it or is it just, I'm, I'm just. It, I'm happy to send it out. Sure, we'll love it. Okay. I usually update it every year before we do our training. Great, love it. Let, and we'll jump into our.
Harassment training, since we're sitting employees kind of.
So quasi sitting employees here, we cover the harassment and discrimination prevention training as well. So the training overview that we'll go over are the protected classes and definitions, the governing laws and policies, types of discrimination and how do we address it, we're harassed. The protected classes are all listed up here, race, creed, color, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, veteran status. National origin, citizenship, disability, age, pregnancy, familial status and genetics. Those are all protected classes. Uh, definition of discrimination is the unjust or prejud- prejudicial treatment of different categories of people or things. Especially on the grounds of personal characteristics. And harassment means aggressive pressure or intimidation and is illegal when directed to a protected class. These are the. Laws that govern discrimination. They're all listed there, including our municipal code and city policies and procedures. On there, those are the federal, state and local laws. Types of discrimination and or harassment, sexual harassment or a hostile work environment. Who can be a perpetrator? Management, employee, public, essentially anybody can be a perpetrator. Who can be a victim, any targeted individual, anyone in the work environment or anyone who tried to help. How do we address harassment? Uh, we report it to our human resources and we report it to their media supervisor. So in your case, you can report it to the mayor if you have any. Issues with that, you could also report it to me or our HR is Jill Hunt. Any questions on harassment, discrimination and harassment? Very good.
Forward.
Pretty straightforward. This is, this is more, um, it's also included, we'd like to touch base on social media now. If you're active on your social media accounts, this is war gear towards the city council, but it's great advice. If you have a personal Facebook account or any kind of social media account, just refrain from talking about city business. Um, it, there have been lawsuits filed for individuals who have. There, there's a debate on whether or not they are entitled to be giving that information out publicly and. And there are issues with accepting friendships or blocking comments, things like that. If you do happen to. Become an elected official and want to have a Facebook account. Make sure it's posted as an elected official.
And make sure your personal.
Make sure your personal account is.
For the city.
Is separated, but if you. The best advice I can give is if you have social media or if you're active on social media, just don't talk about city business.
When I had social media, which has been a while. I would tell people there were public hearings or where the agenda was and things like that, but not. Specifics or anything like that, not anything we'd actually discuss in the meeting, just. There's a meeting, it's this day, be aware of it, sort of things. But I don't have that to me.
Just be careful that line need to be, that line can be crossed really easily, so it's. If there's something, for example, in your case, Nathan, if you wanted to share the city's post.
Yep.
That is coming from the city's official page.
Right.
Without a meeting, we post all of our meetings on social media. So if you're trying to. Help the public understand, please just share our posts. They're typically out there in enough time for you to share. That would be my recommendation if you're trying to get information out to people. Make sure it comes from the authority. The city authority.
Right.
Any questions on that?
Um, so for, okay, so that's city specific. When we're in the set, the season that we are with active legislative session. Do we have any restrictions there? I, I'm thinking not because it's, again, it would be like sharing, there's a committee meeting for this and that, but it's not directly.
City related.
City related, right. It might have a city.
It was, but yes, it would be, so if you're talking with somebody about upcoming legislation or something like that. You're, you're, you're speaking from your personal.
Yeah, and you, you don't lose your first amendment right, because you're a planning commissioner.
Right.
Just don't tell people you're speaking for the city and if it's out there for someone to find, you can direct them to, you can find this here or there and.
But I can't see a problem if you're discussing upcoming legislation.
Yeah. Or even technically the election, although I don't know that we should take sides in the upcoming election either.
Municipal.
Yeah.
That. You're, you're still, if your Facebook post is a personal, or if your account, your social media accounts are personal accounts. You still have a voice as, as a person, yeah, say what you want to say that way. That's not considered city business, right? City business is talking about. The ordinance.
Right. One of the things we've talked about in the meeting here. So if we're talking about stuff that's on the agenda. Reference the agenda and there's a meeting about it, rather than discussing the specifics of it with people out there.
There are other questions? All right.
Okay.
That ends our training. All right.
And that ends our follow up. So that gets us to number seven.
I am motion.
And I will second the motion that we adjourned. All in favor?
I.